I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a moment of silence, please? You want to call current?
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Here.
Counselor Schneider?
Here.
Counselor Simon?
Here.
Counselor Tirino?
Here.
Counselor President Stickley?
Here.
We have six numbers present. We have a form.
Okay, let's see. Counselor has had time to look over the prior meeting minutes. Can we have movement on that, please?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, I'll second.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counsel President Stickley and seconded by Counselor Tirino. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports. We have border controls. And that would be... Jamie, do you have anything to report on that? Tom?
I guess we can just summarize, but... Do you want to, or you want to?
No, feel free.
So we met to discuss the write-offs that we needed to do in the finance department. So the income tax department had 7,354 to write off, and the majority of those were like 2017 and prior because we can't collect on them anymore. It's faster when we're able to...
Special limitations.
And then the water bills, we wrote off $3,308. Those were a lot with the transition from people during COVID when we weren't allowed to send them bills or turn off their water, and then it just kind of caught up. So that's the amount that we got to write off this time. And we had one additional write-off that was a water break. But it was just a timing issue where we couldn't figure out how it broke when it got turned back on and it read when it did. So that was all... I mean, everybody would guess to write off all of these amounts, and hopefully they continue to go down because they are actually a lot less than the last I did it.
And COVID probably didn't help that either because I know that's kind of been the norm once you come back and you got to pay your bills. A lot of them were pre-kept for...
So how much was written out there?
What did you say in the write-off?
So it was 7,300 for taxes and 3,300 for water.
2,000 what?
3,000.
3,000.
300 for water. 2,300. Was that late fees or was that actual stuff?
No, we adjust the late fees off before we write anything off. We don't include penalties or interest.
Okay. I just wanted...
So we will need a motion to accept this and...
Just a report.
...border controls, just a report?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, great. Now we know. Okay, department head reports. We're going to start with Chief Counselor.
Some of you may have seen, we've been doing a media blitz on social media, the movie theater. There's a billboard up with some of our staff members for hiring purposes. We're starting to see some success with that, and generally it's quite a few individuals that don't have certifications, but staff's working with them to get them in the right direction and see what we can make of that. And it's all free. It's been through Ohio Means Job and Carolinier does a great job with it, so we're going to keep pushing ahead with that. We do have fireworks Wednesday night. Looking forward to that. We did Safety City. It went well. A lot of happy little graduates. Homecoming from the fire department aspect went great. It was well done. Been working with department heads and Creighton Electric on getting everybody prepared for when they start the installation of the new generator in July. It'll result in the building losing power, and we want to make sure we're prepared for that until they get it hooked back up. We did have a structure fire this past week and a half in the city. It went well, but we'd like to have a safety and code meeting sooner than later to discuss cleaning up the ability to emergent... to conduct emergent safety mitigation. So if we could do that, that would be great. That's all I have.
Do we have a rain date at all for fireworks?
Probably the fourth.
They are available on the fourth? Oh, wonderful.
I mean, we'll have everything on the third, so if we don't let it go, this day is here, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Unless it's thunder and lightning, we won't cancel.
Okay.
A little bit of rain won't hurt it.
It's supposed to rain in the afternoon on the third.
Yes, correct.
They cut back percentage like 30 or 40% at like 3:00, 4:00 o'clock.
Oh, good.
It was a lot bigger and a lot later, but...
And actually, the fourth looks worse. Oh, my God. So that... It's good to know it maybe. We can put that out tomorrow, the rain date. Check with the company and then have Jan or Corinne put that out so that people know. Okay. Any other questions?
You got enough people for fireworks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Maybe you just want lights more.
I just want to... Yeah, the pyroing me.
All right. Chief?
As Chief Counselor mentioned, Safety City, we are finished up for the year for that. We ended up having to cancel one session due to the low number of enrollees. I've been speaking with Kristen. She said that Mr. Young, the principal there at the primary, said the incoming kindergarten class is one of the smaller ones they've had in quite a while, so numbers are just going down. I think we had 29 graduates, I believe, through the three sessions. So we got that all done for the summer. Homecoming was on the police side, went very well as well. It was a lot easier for us in the new location. It was... It went quite well, I thought. Everything considered being a new venue and kind of trial and error, but really we didn't have any hiccups as far as the police department side of it. Next up, we have the fireworks on Wednesday night, hopefully Wednesday night, because that's when we had everything scheduled. So hopefully no rain.
Is homecoming called to schedule a post-event?
Not yet, I don't believe. And then on the safety and code meeting, we had mentioned as committee, the whole also talking, we want to talk about some parameters for event permits and parade permits that will again include truck permits and different things to bring up that are not in our code or not very well defined in our code. I'd like to get in on that as well, at least start that discussion.
Are you... If we do the meeting, let's say, tomorrow or Wednesday, would you have enough time, the time to get stuff kind of planned out?
It would probably just be a discussion point.
You're going to need 24 hours.
So Wednesday?
I think we'd have to be probably at the discussion point as far as just kind of ideas floating on some of the parameters. We can definitely bring up some concerns and different things, but I don't know if we'd quite be ready to have like a full recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chief Counselor, same for you, or would you be at the point where you might need a recommendation or... I don't know.
I think that comes up to Tom, how we pull it together in the meeting. So at least for the mitigation, the food trailers and stuff on his side of things, yeah, I could pull the switch on that now.
Cool.
Okay. Anything else, Chief?
All right. Well, for a trifecta on the homecoming. We only had one glitch. Our generator hadn't issued, and of course, it was right in the middle of the Queens contest. We had a fuel filter that got plugged, but our mechanic went out, got it running. It ran fine the next two days. We put like 30 or 69 hours of work on that generator. So obviously, if we continue to have the homecoming there, we're going to have to do some upgrading of the electrical because that generator, we want to keep that for a long time. We don't want to try and burn that out. But all in all, I think it went fairly smooth. I didn't have any complaints from our guys on anything out there, so...
Did we lose some tent? Did some of them... I was told by the homecoming committee that some of the tents went from the wind.
We need to look at getting new tarps because... And that wasn't from just the wind. I think they were a little dry rotted from the winter. They were looking bad on Wednesday before the homecoming even started, so we're going to have to look at replacing some of those and getting them updated because it's been a while since they've been updated.
I like the picnic area is covered the way they had it. That was really nice, especially what they did. It was really a good idea.
Have you had a chance, Keith, to speak with the public works staff compared to set up on Fulton Street as compared to set up in a bit older?
Oh, they're hands down. They would much rather have it there because they don't have cars going zipping behind them as they're setting it up, and it's a lot easier for setup there. There's just a few things that we need to obviously tweak as far as setting up there, the placement of it. If you place it on the grass, if you're going to place it on the asphalt, so...
So do we need to get Edison to drop some more power to us over there?
No, we need to have... We've got Cross... I think Cross Electric is going to be giving us a quote on that. He's willing to donate some of his time in order to do it, but it's still going to be an expensive...
Maybe we could phase it just...
And that's what we're looking at doing, doing bits and pieces of it.
So we got plenty of power out there?
Right. We got the power. We just need to get the distribution side.
Distribution part of it. Okay. At least we got a plan. That's the main thing.
Today I met with ODOT. We did a field review of the Fulton Street project for the repaving of that. We're looking at possibly as early as September of next year getting it repaved, but a lot of hoops have to be jumped through to get that. I've also asked them to possibly look into if we can... If there's any additional money available, taking one more block and finishing up the entire state route to get it to Elm Street and get that section done. They won't give us any money to do south of Elm Street, but if we can get that first block there by the church and time lock printing done, then that way all of Elm Street will be done. I mean, all of Fulton Street will be done, and all of State Route 2 will be done by '27. We're going to be working with the county, assisting them in the water tower repairs at Fairgrounds. That will be going down on July 8th. It should be down for about 10 days, so we'll have to keep an eye on the water pressure out to Tegro. During that time, I've already let Phil know about it, so if there's any incidents that we need to be contacted right away so we can boost the pressure in that area in case there's any fires in that area.
When is that?
Be this Sunday.
Okay.
They're starting to work on taking it down now, and hopefully it'll only be down for a week. And then we have to get bacteria tests, and once that's done, then they'll be able to get it back up and in service. And finally, our applications close for the groundkeeper on Friday, and we have 30 applications.
Oh, yeah. Nice.
We've got a bunch to choose from. Now it's going to be logistically getting them all interviewed because under the civil service rules, all 30 have to be interviewed. Want to come on that?
Yeah, thank you. Questions?
Go back to the water tower. We can build enough pressure from other towns.
Yeah, we have plenty. It's just that if they were to have a fire, we would need to turn on additional pumps and open additional valves to make sure that we're pushing more water that way.
So what are we going to do to the tower?
There's working on the stand pipe on the inside of it, replacing that and doing some modifications on it while it's down.
Down, okay.
How do the applications... Are any of them certified or have any...
I was on vacation last week, so I haven't even looked at them. I just...
You don't do that while you're on vacation?
No, apparently not.
He got enough calls from the rain.
Keith, I know your most favorite project of the valve, a hybrid beacon. Any news on when that might start?
That should be starting anytime he's got at least the groundwork.
Okay.
The poles themselves are still on order, so once you get to see the orange barrels up, please don't call me because it's going to be four months possibly that those will be there before we get everything up and around because it's still October before we get the poles in. But he was supposed to be getting... Starting on that... Well, he was supposed to start on it last week. I haven't heard any different on that.
And the pool's still rocking and rolling?
Yes, it is.
It was swimming today. It's freezing out there.
The wind's got to be kind of cold.
Kids don't care.
The heat... What is our capacity?
That's crazy.
792 people.
I guess it'd be warm water.
Because it had to be closer than that heat, so... There was a lot of people, not only there but in the parks and everything. Very busy. Okay, thank you.
Once you're in your...
Jamie?
So I provided you the month-end reports. Income tax revenue, we're still down a little under 8%, but we are improving. Last month, we were down 10%, so it is improving a little bit. We also held the Everside open enrollment meetings last week, so we do have some employees excited to sign up, and that will begin on August 1st. And I think that's all I have today. Questions?
Yeah, there was during committee, the whole Jamie came up, the Everside idea, elected officials able to take advantage of that.
So I didn't include you in the open enrollment. I think that... I'm not sure how it works. If you guys can vote on it, maybe I can include you.
There was a question that came up during committee, the whole one. We didn't really get a firm answer, so...
Well, I still think though, if it's something that for elected officials, if they want to make a, you know, first see if they can, and then if they can't, then maybe that's something that eventually they would like to do because you guys are the ones that make that decision.
Well, you too.
Well, I have insurance, so... No, I mean, I have insurance.
Yeah.
Yes. But I think that is something that... I think that's a good thing. See if you can.
We got to go and ask them about the pool, then...
Tom?
I have a question. Why... What is a hybrid beacon? He's gone. I know what it's going to do, but why do they call it a hybrid beacon? Why is it hybrid?
Is it the...
Because it's the flashing red lights. Does it take solar and electric? That makes it a hybrid, right?
Yeah, solar and electricity.
That's mine. That's the only thing that makes sense to me.
Sticker price.
Well, yeah.
Let's label it something real expensive.
Just in case dollars. Working when it's cold?
Well, it's good for Delta, it's good for Wasean, right? Delta has the hybrid.
They have a hybrid. Oh, we got to have one then. All right, all right. That solves it then.
Our school's got one.
Do they?
Down by the school.
Oh, we don't even have that.
Oh, my goodness. It's a green noise of blue.
I do want to report that, just FYI update on that, on the thing with the EPA, the discussions we've been having. So we, our contract engineer submitted a sort of a reduced proposal to the EPA, which had been pending for a couple of weeks, and they finally came back and said, "Okay, we're willing to look at that. Give us a more detailed version of it." So the engineers to the, I think, another couple of weeks has to prepare a more detailed proposal that will get submitted to the EPA. So we're headed down the right track, I think, right trail on that. So they will accept that.
And then Tom, for the safety and code, you and Danny also wanted one. Do you want to pick that?
It'll be the same, I think, isn't it?
Will it be the same as...
Well, it's on the... That's something different than I think what the guys have been discussing. It's on the zoning certificate.
Yeah. Do you want to try and knock that out too when we're all together or no?
Uh...
Is that ready?
We can.
Three item agenda.
Yeah. Will you join us in blackout, come out?
You said you had Wednesday off.
I know. That's what I'm trying to get everybody pulled in.
Pack a snack.
I may be off on Wednesday afternoon, though. Would you be doing it in the morning?
Yeah, we could do it in the morning.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Because these guys are going to be out of the...
So who do you think, like 6:30?
Wednesday afternoon.
Seven?
I'm on it too.
No, it's me, you, and...
Oh, I thought it was...
Are you on safety and code?
I know. I think it's... Give me a second.
I'm going to get mine and list and put it under here and says, "Do not..."
Kind of like the pens and calendars.
They're gone.
Put my name on it. So if you would take this.
They're gone.
Nice. Isn't that mine?
And a quick update on the trails, the Arrowhead Trails, the... Yeah, the Homecoming Park Trails. We are... Rotary Club is embarking eventually here on a program to replace some of the very nice but low benches that the city donated a while ago with the more user-friendly ones, so that... Those have been ordered, and over the course of the next several months, I think we'll be slowly replacing those. And anyone interested in donating to the Rotary can have the bench dedicated to a particular cause or person. Can reach out to Rotary if they're interested in doing that. And then Trails in really good shape. Ed has been working on the southeast corner of the Southwoods, which is the one spot, if any of you have access to woods, where it gets a little muddy when the rains come down, come down, but he's been working on that. In fact, if you were out there, you'll see two old John Deere tractors and Ed working on it. So that's been shored up. So the trail surfaces are really in good shape. Even I ran Saturday morning after that big rain on Friday, and it was just, you know, it was great. You could get through without any problems.
I just seen...
It's beautiful out there right now.
Someone was out there just this morning, and they got serenaded by frogs out there, and they said it was really cool. So I mean...
There's some big frogs out there.
Really big frogs because she had them on. They were loud, but it was neat. Okay. Any other questions, Patra?
Did you find the...
No.
...easement? Not yet.
Not yet. I guess I'll be... I'll work with Keith on that for sure.
Still working on it?
Yeah.
So you want to ask Keith, since he's back, your question?
Why they call it a hybrid beacon?
Because it's not automatically controlled. It's push button.
What?
I believe that's the reason.
Okay. That's what we thought. We just wanted to... That's what Shane said, but you were wrong.
That was me. I was talking about the sun and the moon and the stars.
I was talking, it was solar plus electric.
Yeah, we thought it was like solar and gas.
Not like a regular car.
The only time it is activated is if it gets physically pushed.
I understand that. And then it's on a timer.
Yes.
Then they start blinking yellow, and then they go solid red light, then total red.
Yep.
And then they, when people cross, then it's on a timer, and then they come back on. Just like the one and the other tone.
Are you the one that pushes the button then?
You will if you got it crossed.
Why am I going to do it? All right.
You're going to be a sales cat?
Okay, moving on. Let's see. Our legislation is really boring. We're going to move all the way down to... Oh, sorry. Well, yeah.
Resolution's never boring. It's very...
No, number one, no, no second reading and third reading we do. Resolution 2024-19 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into the Clinton Township-City of Wasean Annexation Agreement pertaining to the annexation of 13.92 acres and Clinton Township.
I make that motion. Shouldn't that say...
It should say third reading.
Third reading.
Yeah.
That's what I said, didn't I?
Yeah, you should.
You read it right, yeah.
My mistake.
Oh. He said, "How be paid sticking to everything."
It's under the third.
It's under third reading. It's just a typo. It'll be...
There's a typo in here? See that one?
Motion. Anybody? Did anyone make a motion?
I did.
I need a second.
I need a second.
Thank you. Motion for this resolution 2024-19 on third reading. Moved by Counsel President Stickley and seconded by Counsel Simon. Any discussion? Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Tirino?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six days early, the motion carries.
Okay. Under New Business, it's a motion to authorize the funding for the immediate remediation of the property on Attiki Street, which recently experienced a fire. We do have funds in place for this, and I don't know how much of it goes over, depending on what we're able to do and what the cost is going to be. But we do have money in there. It just may not be enough that we may have to come back and get some more.
So are we talking demolishing costs?
No, no. We're just getting it safe. That's what the meeting's going to be about.
Safe?
Yeah. That's what they're going to talk about at the safety and code meeting, and then I'm going to discuss a little more with Tom on process. We need to move.
I'll make the motion to move forward.
I'll second.
Motion to authorize the funding for the immediate remediation of a property on Attiki Street, which recently experienced a fire, moved by Counsel President Stickley and seconded by Counsel Tirino. Any discussion?
Yeah, real quick. Jamie, is there a budget amount? Is it a line item that we have?
Oh, yeah. We do have one in the building housing unit. It currently only has $2,000 available.
That's why we may have to come back.
Just felt a little bit like a blank check there for a little bit.
No.
No. Thank you.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Tirino?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six days early, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And just to reassure counsel, that meeting that Brandon's going to be setting up, that's going to be part of the discussion a little bit, moving forward with that process. Okay, that was New Business. Anything else?
Yes, I have some New Business, ma'am.
Okay, go right ahead. New?
New Business, yeah. The addresses within the city that I wanted to chat with folks about are 730 North Harvest Lane and 1183 Apache Drive. Both of these are properties within the city, and the homeowners have reached out to me over the last couple of months in reference to trenching work that's been done on their property and some of the negative outcomes from that trenching work. The 730 North Harvest Lane reached out to me in March, and just over this weekend, the Apache Drive address reached out to me. I just wanted to throw this at the administration and see if there's anything the city can do. I don't necessarily need an answer tonight, but I just wanted to get a sense. Is there any relief or any help that the city can offer these folks in their, you know, what they're experiencing, so...
Well, Shane, on the, I think it's the Apache Drive one. I'm not 100% sure. Is that Jack?
It is Charles and Grace.
Okay, I'm not sure. We had, we had one right there at Apache Drive and I believe Arrowhead Trails.
Yeah, Zenirod Trails.
Right, but right at the corner of the house there.
Okay, gotcha. Oh, Jack Warrenke's place.
Yes, that. We had, I talked with Jack. We had got some resolution there. We talked with Grace, and I thought that they were working with her to get that remediated, that it wasn't, it wasn't completed. Evidently, one crew started it, the other crew never showed up to finish it, kind of thing. But we had contacted, I can't think of his name off the top of my head right now, but the guy that is in charge overseeing the operation, he was supposed to... I know I got ahold of Jack, and I thought he was getting ahold of Grace to get that corrected and send some out to take care of it. Now, as far as the one in Harvest Drive, I know they've been having some... Now, as far as the one on Harvest Drive, I know they've been having some nightmares with it because one person said, and a lot of that wasn't due to the underground boring, it was due to, I believe, that the machine struck the electrical wire, which caused problems for them. And they were having issues trying to figure out who's responsible. Was it the electric company? Was it the underground utilities? And getting that taken care of. What I told them, if they, you know, they should contact their insurance company, have their insurance company work on it, but they could also contact the PUCO because they're regulated under the PUCO for if they have any complaints.
Have they already done that?
Yes, yeah. And I, I sort of felt like the city wasn't going to be of great assistance because it's, but I just, I think to myself, all the trenching work that's been done, I think about those trenching companies that come on our citizens' property to do the work, really uninvited when you think about it. And then these, these two families, I'm sure there's others within the city that have just had nightmare stories.
I have forwarded complaints as well.
So are these from Omni Fiber?
No, these were, both of these were from Bright Speed. The Omni Fiber, we had about a dozen, maybe two dozen complaints throughout the time that Omni Fiber was putting it in. Almost all of them were remediated, taken care of as soon as they were notified. Some of them, they were taken care of before I was even able to call the people back, so they were pretty good about it. Bright Speed at the very beginning was very good about taking care of it. Then they kind of slacked off. I don't know if they had a change in hierarchy or what, but now they seem to be back to taking care of the problems. But if there's an issue, they can contact me and I can get ahold of our contact and if not possible, give them numbers and people to assist them.
So do they trench on private property without permission?
No, they're trenching, they're trenching in the easements. Now, we have had a couple where they missed the mark on the easements and they've had to go back and remediate that.
That was right out front here.
Yeah. So if it's on the easement, then?
Right, and that's, that's part of the problem. They still have to take due care, exercise due caution.
I do.